Friends, I'm going to call this Celine City Council work meeting to order at 6:45 PM on Monday, May 21st. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, councilmember CEO Dylan Girbaugh, McClellan Mitchell, and Mayor Pro Tem Tahar. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, interim wastewater superintendent Feticch, city attorney Smith, and also joining us at the table is Brian Rubel from Tetech. Brian, we welcome you here this evening. The rest of you who are in the audience, if you'd be so kind to sign in in the back to my left, we would appreciate that. And at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
As submitted, Mr. Girbaugh. Thank you, sir. Seconded by Councilwoman Dylan. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. I said the motion carries. You come to public comments on the meeting's activities, they can forward this time to the county or question the city council. This public comment area will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address the conference. There are no public comments. Then we'll proceed to the discussion portion of the agenda. We have one item, which is the NOVA filters at the wastewater treatment plant. As you all recall, this has been an item that's been discussed at numerous council meetings over the past six months to a year. I had a brief conversation with the city manager, I believe, a week ago, maybe 10 days ago. And he indicated that he thought there was value in having city staff along with our consultant at Tetech, the legal counsel, kind of talk about the NOVA filters, what our options are moving forward in advance of a presentation that's being done by NOVA, which is at our next meeting, first meeting of June, is that correct?
Very good.
So I thought that was a marvelous idea, and I agreed to work with him in the first office to schedule this work meeting. So unless there's anything for me, I'm going to turn it over to him for some introductory remarks, and then you should have received, I believe, actually, it looks like both a electronic and a paper copy of the presentation titled "NOVA Filter Review."
So, all right. So, very briefly, as the mayor alluded, from the number of discussions we've had with council about the NOVA filters and potential alternatives, and so we thought it would be a good thing, be beneficial, to have this discussion prior to the June 4th meeting when NOVA filters are, when NOVA is here addressing the council. So, unless there's questions of me, I'm going to turn it over. We worked with Scott and Brian to help put this together, and so we'll go through the presentation and then open up for questions.
If you want to begin, Mr. Rubel. I don't know that the microphone in front of you is working. I'd like to see. It is, okay.
Testing.
Yep, good. Just hold it close to you, Brian. If you want to begin, and then Mr. Smith, whenever you'd like to jump.
I mean, we would welcome your thoughts as well. Brian, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and you gave such a good introduction, I'll just jump right into it. It was perfect and right on the spot. So, by way of history of this piece of equipment, they were installed, what we call the Phase II project, at the wastewater plant. These filters were pretty much the last thing that was operated on the project, on that portion of the project. And that dates back to September of 2016 is when those were started. And unfortunately, those have been somewhat a problematic piece of equipment. There have been more problems with those than any of us would have liked to have seen. And I'll summarize some of those today and take questions on the next steps. Most of the problems the last year, year and a half have had to do with bearings and wheels. And I'll describe those perhaps a little bit more, but the bearing is what takes the weight of the filter and helps it rotate around.
...
The wheels are there to both spin the filter and to help guide it on the opposite side.
...
And those have really been most of the issues the last year and a half. With the exception of an issue that rocked up in April where actually, and I have a sketch, I think that was... I describe that, a seam of the...
...
Separated. And NOVA was very prompt in repairing that, but that was the risk, it struck in the last year and a half that has occurred. Everything else has been kind of minor component.
But as with anything, if one component fails, the machine stops working.
So, but my major, a non-working filter is not something that any of us like to see. And some of the statistics, both from records that I had and that the plant staff had regarding the number of days that we had some issues, there would be equipment operating way more than any of us would like. I will say that the frequency of those has been much less the last 12 months than the first four months. So, the frequency is going down, but it's not, it's not to zero by any means, not 48 days. So, I will say, the NOVA response to that has been very good, actually. Nobody's... Likes the number of problems that we've had, but in my experience with wastewater equipment, water treatment equipment, this company has responded very favorably. We have never had to argue to get them to come and repair this, get somebody on an airplane up here to do that, or, in this case, they've teamed with a company in Farmington Hills, a very well-qualified mechanical contractor named Titus Welding. They have them on retainer that any time a problem has occurred, they have both trained the Titus Welding staff on how to make the repairs and quickly issued whatever authorization they need to, to make that happen. So, it's been very helpful for them to have done that. They've also agreed to provide an extended warranty. They affirmed that as recently as last week, that they will extend the warranty and they will...
...
...
At the first time that we're all in agreement that this is operating reliably.
Let me just interject here a couple of things. One, remember in the history of it, we chose these filters among two different alternatives because these filters were going to cost $95,000 less to install than the alternatives. And on a project, you know, $95,000 is a significant amount of money, and NOVA was, after Tetra Tech checked them out, it's a reliable company that does good work. I also want to say that this response by NOVA is quite a bit different than responses normally in my experience. Normally, what I've seen is a company goes so far and then throws up their hands and says, "We're not going to do any more. It's costing us too much. If you're going to sue us, go ahead and sue, and we'll let the lawyers fight it out." Instead, what NOVA's done is stuck with it, come out, it's been responsive. I think the last time they were out and had it fixed within four hours. So, you know, as they come before you, you might want to thank them for the responsive activity, for their persistence in sticking with it, and so forth. Neither we nor they like the performance of these filters at this point, but they do seem to be sticking with it, and they're trying to come up with some modifications to the equipment that hopefully will solve the problem, and Brian will explain more about that.
Hold the questions until the end, Brian. If you want to keep going through your analysis, that would be terrific.
There's some technical diagrams that I included here. I didn't intend to spend any significant amount of time on this, but by way of... The first one is what we call a process flow schematic. This is a refresher of what these filters do. I'll simplify this a little bit. The flow, the wastewater comes into the treatment plant, it is pumped at the raw sewage pumps, goes through a grit system, and into the primary clarifiers. That's really kind of the first wave of treatment. These clarifiers, the real heavy waste drops out at these clarifiers. Then secondary treatment is also, is a biological process. It's what you have, you have rotating biological contactors or RBCs, and those work in concert with a second set of clarifiers to absorb nutrients in the water and then settle them out in the clarifier. And then the filters are what we call tertiary treatment, the third step in the treatment. It's kind of a polish. Primarily, they remove solids. A little bit of solids escape the secondary clarifiers, and these filters are a polishing step, but they're an important step needed to meet the requirements of your permit. So, it is not a optional step. It is needed and needed to operate reliably. And then the water's disinfected and sent to the river. So, just as a refresher of where that fits in the bigger picture, that was my intent for that diagram only. The hydraulic profile does contain a pretty important piece of information, and one of the real constraints with this process is the amount of energy that we have to push the water through the filters. That's based on water level. Water flows from a high level to a low level, and one of the constraints when we were picking out filtering equipment almost four years ago now is to find one that fit within that range of elevation that the Celine plant has. We can't modify, easily modify the upstream or easily modify the downstream, therefore we have a constraint that we have to work around. And four years ago, there were limited options to do that, and NOVA was one of the options that fit that constraint. So, just, that was the purpose of that sketch. Just to reorient how these are arranged, the right side of this drawing called Filter Building Plan shows the two filters that we have. These are in the eastern bay of the legacy filter building. That filter building's been there for 30-plus years. There were sand filters in there before, we removed those, and we installed these filters in the east bay. Reason they're in all in one bay is because we needed to leave the west side operable during construction with the sand filters. So, we left the west side operable, we constructed the east side, the west side was abandoned including the project. And this rendering might be a better...
More of a layperson's view of how these filters look, but the other stainless steel cabinets, so to speak, with rotating elements inside of them, and you can see the piping and so forth that connect the upstream flows and send it to the downstream. Perhaps, perhaps I could skip that slide, that word slide, impact, go through the other figure there for just a second, and this is a blow-up of the filters to reorient ourselves with those. They're discs that rotate. The discs have a stainless steel screen on them that captures solids inside of them. And clean wastewater falls out the bottom.
As...
As these rotate up, a washwater system sprays on them, and the solids that are ash on the inside then fall out and are captured and then separated from the waste stream. So, you have clean water going one direction and the waste going in the other. And this red part on the left side is the motor, which energizes rotation and connects to a drive wheel. I believe that might be the drive wheel, that light blue wheel just above the red motor that turns these discs. And the other side of this then has a idler wheel, which just kind of keeps it in place, keeps it from moving around. So, the bearing, and the bearing isn't visible here, but the bearing is what connects this rotating part to the frame. It supports the weight of it and allows that to rotate. Cars have bearings, any kind of rotating device has a bearing to it. The last, this part that separated here in April and was, and has been repaired, at least temporarily, is right at the notch of the...
Of the point.
... That is separated. They're actually epoxy together. There are rivets there, too, but epoxy is what's intended to hold these stainless steel together, and it's separated. Last I talked to NOVA, they were still investigating the cause of that, but they have put a temporary clamp all around that. That's very, very rugged and certainly is doing a job right now in keeping that unit in place. But it's separated, it had an impact on water quality, too. The water came over and went through the screen, so it was, it was water escaping through that gap, and it was affecting the treatment performance, so...
Just one disc or all of them?
It happened on one of the tubes. They did, they put this clamp on both just as a precautionary measure, but they only saw it on...
Going back to the slide that I skipped, impact of the filter performance on city of Celine.
This plant has struggled some months to need its permit, and that is due primarily to days when the filter was not operable. It's not operating, it's being bypassed, and you're not getting that polishing that's needed. And there's no doubt that that causes time for everybody. At least a few hours on average a month that the staff has to deal with it, that they could and should be doing other things. Campbell has to deal with it, and all of us have to deal with it. So, clearly, time that should be put in our places. As far as what alternatives to these filters, I showed you in that sketch earlier, you have that whole west side that's now open, how was the sand filter before. So, if you were to replace these, I think you would put something on the west side. You would want to keep these filters operable. I'll show you the schedule, you'll probably all look at it. It takes a while for this to happen, but you would probably start doing something on the west side. Now, our review of these three and a half years ago were that some of these filters were much larger than the NOVA filter, and I'm not certain that you could put two other manufacturers on the west side. So, it may be a situation where you would put one on the west side, go back, remove the NOVA filters, and put another one on the east side. The dimensions just might require that. That's a detail to work out down the road. But you would need to design something, you would need, you would need to look at the available vendors. In three and a half years, it's very possible there are more options out there since the last time we went through this. But you'd have to go through, you need a permit from the DEQ to use a new technology. So, there's a time required for that. I assume you would completely fit this. There would be time required for that. And when Scott and I were here in February, we talked a lot about construction and the timeframe just to get this equipment. It's custom-made, so it's an extensive period of time to order the equipment, get it procured, shipped, and installed. It's not a, it's not a simple, quick thing to have happen, and the following page outlines some of the timeframe for that. Most of that time is producing, manufacturing the equipment. I would say the design and actually the construction is relatively short. It's the time to manufacture and mobilize it to get to Celine, the real time crunch. And it would not be a simple or cheap solution. I think it would be a million-dollar-plus project to do something with.
And I think it would be significantly more than the page for these filters. Scott mentioned at the beginning, the next alternative we had was almost $100,000, and we had inflation and so forth the last three years. As far as what's next, NOVA's still is developing a permanent solution to that well, that joint problem. I do not have a schedule yet from them. They do all that to me and you. Hopefully, we'll get that report two weeks when Mr. Boy, the president, and he's confirmed his attendance, so he's certainly planning on being here in two weeks. And that's all I had.
Very good. Very good, Brian. We appreciate your remarks and your prepared, it is a PowerPoint presentation you provided us, provided us a kind of a paper copy. Mr. Smith, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I think of next steps. When NOVA's here, we want to encourage them to do what's necessary to get this fixed. I think appreciating their stick-to-it-iveness and that they are still committed to coming in and fixing it, and we certainly want to encourage them to extend the warranty and so forth. The alternatives, frankly, aren't real palatable to us. So, to the extent that we can encourage them to keep working at it, and we come up with a solution that works, we're far ahead of what the other alternatives are. Now, nobody's happy with the way this is working. NOVA's not happy with it either because it's besmirching their reputation among other things, and they certainly want to keep providing these products for wastewater treatment plants across the country and don't want to have a bad reputation. And it's certainly frustrating to us, and, you know, we might want to talk with them about the resulting permit violations at some point, should the DEQ ever look at us and decide that because of those permit violations, it's going to take some sort of administrative action. But other than that, I would encourage us to be thankful that they're sticking with it, be thankful that they're looking for a cure because it beats spending a lot of money on something else. Even if we could get NOVA to pay for replacement, they aren't obligated to pay for a product that would have cost us more to begin with. So, even if, you know, we could get them to pay for the replacement, there would still be an upcharge for the difference in cost we would have paid for the other product to start with.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I think it would be appropriate if you had at least a lot of...
Mr. Feticch, as the boots on the ground on a daily basis and as our interim director, do you have anything you'd like to add at this time?
Well, it's been a long time.
Mark, why don't you come here? Scott and Brian, speak into the microphone, and then if you just want to hang tight as we work our way around the table, there might be questions that are more appropriate for you to address.
Well, it just seems that, you know, we're pushing, we're going on two years, and we haven't got a good run out of it, and we've been having a lot of mechanical failures. And the way that I'm looking at it is, we have to get those mechanical failures fixed, obviously, before we can see that the filters themselves will perform operationally, you know, as they were, as they were designed to do. And we've been in, we've had periodic violations, so I'm not sure what the answer is, but we need to get them, a good run on them, so that they're not breaking down before we can assess the second half of the equation.
Very good. We appreciate your comments. Let me start with Councilman McClellan, and I'll end with...
With Councilmember Girbaugh. And again, please be sure to speak into your microphone and...
If you wouldn't mind, we'll get your phones away from the microphones. On occasion, that causes some feedback, and I apologize. For your...
Yeah, no real questions. I appreciate the presentation and the detail. I guess mine is more of an opinion than it is a question, other than there's no guarantee that something that's designed that's new, that gets put in there, is going to work any better than this does, right? I mean, because it's a custom-designed, custom-made, that is subject to mechanical failure and quality design, you know, quality control design and stuff like that.
I can't promise anything, so...
Right. So, I mean, you could spend a million dollars and still have mechanical issues on a new piece that, with a new company that potentially we would have, be dealing with two years, three years down the road.
Clearly, this product has been extraordinary in its number of problems, but...
Right, right. But it sounds to me like they recognize that there's issues. They, I'm assuming they know what the root causes of the issues are, and that's why they're so willing to work with us, and I'm trying to get it to work and be repaired because they know that it's not working to their standards. So, I guess, I mean, I think it's unacceptable that it's not working, but I'm not willing to support looking at doing something new at this point for that kind of price tag when they are still willing to work with us. And as long as they're willing to extend that warranty until we do get consistency, I think that we should stick with staying the course and trying to get them to solve it. I worry a little bit that if we start saying, "Oh, we're going to go to something different," that they're going to back off and say, "Okay, well, you guys are going to go somewhere else, then we're not, we're going to say, 'See you later,' and we're not going to..." Then we're really going to be in a problem because we would have a filter that's not working, that the manufacturing isn't, manufacturer isn't willing to try and work with us on, and then a construction process and then a million-dollar expenditure to try and deal with on top of it. So, that's where I am.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Councilman Mitchell.
Just kidding. Okay. There we go. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. I do appreciate you all being here and discussing this with us. In my personal view, I think it's good to have a reminder and an overview, and I think what I'm particularly interested in is forecasting what happens beyond that warranty. I absolutely appreciate that this company has done far beyond what I think many companies would do. I appreciate the, is it the president or the owner who comes up and presents? That's just, it is extraordinary. That word was used, and I agree. I do have a couple of technical questions, and it concerns the periodic discharges that we have. It bothers me that we do have periodic discharges. Whether or not we are fined for it, I just think as an institution, we need to do the best we can to prevent that. Is there an approximate number of times that we are aware?
I can't answer that. I have not looked at your data.
Do you have any...
I don't have that, but I can get, I can get that for you.
Why don't you, Mark? Yeah, Mark, why don't you provide that information to Mr. Campbell? He can submit if he is weakly communicate.
I will do. Thank you.
And then as a follow-up question, are we aware of what the amounts of fines are to communities who do have that kind of fine?
Well, I, it varies. I mean, it varies from, "Don't, you know, don't do this again," to, to chronic offenders can get monetarily fined.
Sure.
And I, you know, there is a limit, or the EPA does have a number that conceivably per day, that could be passed along. I have not worked for any community that got anywhere close to that number.
No, the possibilities are up to $25,000 a day. I've never seen anything close to that happen, particularly if it's a result of a malfunction such as this, and everybody's been diligently trying to pursue it and so forth. Normally, the DEQ's fairly understanding of all of that. So, and we're not trying to hide them or anything, so, and there hasn't been any catastrophic kind of failure that's resulted in any kind of natural resource damages, so it's not...
It's not egregious, the risk at this point.
Right.
Okay, okay. I'm just going to take a quick look. I think the only other question, I did note that, you know, if we were to look at an alternative, it would be in excess of a million dollars. What are we spending now? Forgive me, I didn't, I don't, I may have missed that on the report, but I'm trying to find that page now. Is it 12? It's page 12 on the PowerPoint. So, what are we, what are we expending now for, for, we have the initial cost of the filters themselves?
Yes. They, I can easily point to $813,000.
For those current filters, that does not have other indirect costs like bonds and insurance and things like that, so clearly, the true cost is slightly above $813,000.
So, that's, that was our initial investment when it began?
Our cost now is extra staff time that's put in. When these filters are down, it requires staff to be there when they're maintained or when the repairs are done. It requires extra staff diligence in operating the plant and so forth. So, we've got some heightened staff cost, but in terms of all of the repairs and so forth... forth, Nova's doing all of that without cost to us.
And then, so theoretically, in forecasting, I try to play what if. So we, they're running. The warranty starts. Three years goes by, we have to, we have to repair this, let's say, right after the warranty. And how long does that, does that really handicap us as far as operations? Does it take, what happens when, if, if that scenario is, comes to fruition?
Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but normally, a warranty would be one year after construction. So we're getting three times the, the normal warranty on it, when they will come in and, and handle any material defects in, in the filters themselves. So we're in much better condition if they follow through and do all of that than we would be under any other scenario.
Okay. I'll, I'll end it there, so that other council members can ask questions.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. Councilwoman Dillon.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. We're all sharing. Sharing the germs. Thank you very much. I appreciate you being here. I know I was the one that asked after every meeting to Mr. Skoll, you know, what's our status? When are we going to look at other options? Are there other options? So I appreciate that you've put this together and are here for us. And I appreciate how conservative you're being in, let's wait it out and see. But like Ms. Mitchell said, I do have some concerns about that of, what would it cost if we were out of warranty right now for these repairs? I mean, can we find that out, like a ballpark? I mean, is it going to cost $100,000 every time they come on site, or is it like 50 bucks? You know, I guess trying to figure that part of it out.
Well, these repairs you need. This, this one happened a few weeks ago, these wheels, it's, it's been most of the problem.
Right.
They fixed it in a few hours, so you're going to, you'd have a few hours of a trade person's time. And the wheel itself, I, 100 bucks, 200 bucks, something like that, so it had to be a thousand dollar repair for us. Al bearing is a little different story. That has to be, that has to be jacked up in place, probably takes a day or two.
So that might be a couple thousand dollar repair.
Okay.
That's best.
Okay. So I want to kind of go back to the beginning. When we chose Nova, was this product already in place in other communities? They didn't build this just for us. They had this designed in other places, correct?
Yes, they have been manufacturing filters for a dozen years.
Right. So the one that we have, was it being used already in other communities?
Yes, although they, like a car, they, they modify components every year, so were there slight variations from prior years? Yes. Have they been in filter business a long time? Yes.
Right. So I assume that, you know, we wouldn't have picked them if we knew that they were great filters. So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, when did they sort of turn the corner? What did they change in their process that's causing them to have so many problems? Because initially, I believe Mr. Skoll had explained to us that it was this wheel that was like plastic, that was just breaking, and, okay, it just needs to be manufactured and end up wet. And then it needs to be manufactured with a different material. And so it seems like they've tried a bunch of things, but it doesn't seem to be working, so it's more of a process problem than a, a part issue? Is that, is that correct? I'm just trying to, to, to ask.
Some parts, some parts of your description are correct, like the bearings. I believe we're on the third bearing. They, they tried two others prior. The wheels only got replaced in the last month. Although Mr. Skoll mentioned this several months ago, it took that long to manufacture them and then put them in.
Okay.
So I believe this is only the second version of that wheel.
Okay.
But there's, yes.
Okay.
And, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't, aren't these filters, they manufacture these on demand, right?
That's correct.
So we order them, and they manufacture them to fit our facility with the piping and the wiring and everything to, to fit our configuration to some extent.
It, it's true that they are manufactured on demand. It's like an auto dealership. They have various models, and you order a model, a size, a capacity, and then they manufacture it with that purchase order. So there is some standardization within Nova.
So using that analogy, is there now being, it's two years later, is there a newer version that is working correctly?
They have continued to modify it, and unfortunately, in large part to things they've learned in Celine, DeWagiac, and other places that had the same problems. And I, I am told that things are, newer machines are working better. I, I have no data, other than anecdotally.
Okay.
That'd be an excellent question for Mr. Loy in two weeks, so.
Okay.
He'd be the best person to answer that for you.
And I think you touched on it earlier, is, in the span of since we started this process, is there newer, better, cheaper technology that we could move to?
That requires a significant amount of time. It requires meeting with manufacturers and reference checks and things like that. That could be done. I, I have not done that.
Okay. And then my last question, um, sorry, I had my notes on, on something else, was going back to, and I think Ms. Mitchell talked about this, which is the whole violations thing. Right now, we're at low flow? Like, aren't we moving into high season? And is that going to impact this?
A lot of that depends on, on weather.
Okay.
Currently, we're moving into, May starts the time of year, May through October, where our permit really tightens up.
Right, that's.
It's a little, or the, the parameters aren't as strict through the winter months, late fall and winter months, and early spring.
So are, do we have concerns, do you have concerns about that?
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I, I do. If, if the filters aren't performing the way they should.
Right.
There are concerns. I think we're probably this month, the numbers look pretty fair. I mean, I don't think we're doing too bad, but I think we could do a little, a little bit better. I mean, you really don't want to be on the edge all the time.
And how can we self-correct? Is there a way that we can self-correct in that?
Well, I mean, we're being diligent with the filters. They are, they are plugging out the, let me, let me clarify that. There's a backwash pump that, backwash is the filter to remove the solids that build up, so the screens on the filters themselves don't plug. There is a filter within that backwash pump that plugs up, and when that plugs up, the backwash pump doesn't operate. It, it kicks out. So we have been changing those a lot. Part of that problem, in my mind, is that we're using the effluent from that filter to backwash, and then henceforth, it's plugging up the filter within the backwash pump. Hope I explained myself there. It can give you a little.
Can you see that I have the glazed overlook?
No, well, I.
I'm trying to process what you're saying. No, that's okay. So, okay. I'll, I'll stop right there, because I think I'm not sure that I'm understanding fully, so I'll let other people ask. Thank you.
Mr. Seo, if you'd like to ask a question, I would ask you and Mayor President Charlie and Councilmember Girba, if you'd be mindful of time, we have a time that's left for our villagers and reconvene into our regular meetings.
Okay, the permit violation. When that happens, are we actually discharging solids into the water stream?
If, yes, if that's the violation. There's, there's several different parameters that we have to, to meet.
Okay, but normally, that, that was only like when the seam opened? That you'd have that kind of a discharge? I guess what I'm trying to understand is, what's the damage to the environment when we don't meet our permit?
I'm probably not the one to answer that question, to assess that. I mean, but, yeah, part, part of that is solids are part of our permit, and we have violated those, that particular parameter.
Is that because you had to bypass, when the filters are down, you're having to bypass it and run it directly?
Yeah, when the filters, when they do stop, it, it, yes, we, we go into essentially a bypass situation, so there's no filtration of our secondary to our primary.
Probably the best thing to do here would be to take a look at those situations and come back and give you some good data.
I'd appreciate that.
On those, rather than speculating what might or might not be. Let's find out what happened in each of those incidents where we were outside the permanent parameters.
I guess the point where I am.
That's that much outside, or.
Yeah.
That, that would probably be helpful to know, wouldn't it?
Exactly. How injuryous is the situation? And when do we need to start kicking them in the knee, as opposed to trying to put our armor up and keep them inside?
Thank you, Mr. Seo. Mayor President.
Okay, yes, Mr. Seo's asked my main question. My second question is, so the three-year warranty, has already started, or has not yet started?
Great question. They have agreed to start the warranty period, I, I think, on a mutually agreeable future date, upon which we all agree that the filters are reliable.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully, just a couple. We mentioned the sand filter was abandoned. Can that be used, or is it completely abandoned and not, can that serve as a backup?
Sand filter is gone.
Okay. That was one question I had on that. The other one being, when you go look through all these items, and you understand what seems to be either quality check issues or failed materials, what have we pursued in the attempt to basically say, for me, it looks like everything needs to be upgraded or replaced. Whatever happened during manufacturing of these products, either it wasn't tested the way it should have been tested, because when I'm looking at these, where it had bolts that fell off, we have things delaminating, we have items that are just, you know, obviously that the manufacturing process failed. And so that would be the question I'm going to have for, for the company, is that it's clear that all of these, if the process and the whole engineering was designed properly, it sounds like it would work, but it sounds like every material that's in here is a, is a failure, and from my perspective, would be, we should have everything replaced, or at least that's the guarantee that we would need. But the only other thing, question I had was, if the, if the sand filters aren't there, and so, and we just talked about what, he said that we're doing some kind of bypassing, how much, I guess, I'd like to know what the amount of water flow and everything would be in the event that we did have to, you know, shut it down for more, two or three days. So I kind of wanted to know like a worst-case scenario, so say, something like another bearing fails, or the motor, or like the backwater pump, which sounds like that's a design issue that you mentioned, that it's using effluent that is contaminated, that potentially is adding more problem to the other pump, that even that would be a redesign flaw that they should be looking at. And of course, I would want to push forward on the aspect of, yeah, if you fixed everything based on our problems, then we need to be looking at having us be given those upgrades at no cost to us, because we're there testing, and they basically are now going to benefit from that whole issue.
Thank you, Mr. Girba. Dylan, appreciate your remarks and your presentation this evening. Needless to say, I think a number of councilmembers have asked for some additional information, which, which Campbell had asked that you provide to you, we communicate more in advance of our next council meeting, when we have a representative of Nova who will come to present. If I'm not mistaken, it's our plan to have that gentleman present at the beginning of the meeting. Is that correct? Very good. Well, I look forward to a robust discussion specifically about upgrades and extending warranty. And I'm going to ask my colleagues, if you have questions or request information between now and when our guest comes in our first meeting in June, I would encourage you to reach out and contact the sitting members. With that, again, gentlemen, thank you for your time this evening. And Brian, we appreciate your work on that PowerPoint presentation. Very well done, very informative. This time, the chairman can motion adjourn at 7:30, and then we will reconvene into our regular meeting at 7:35.
So moved? Seconded?
Moved by Dylan, seconded by Mitchell, to adjourn at 7:30. All in favor, senior vice president say aye.
Aye.
Folks say nay. Ayes have, convenes adjourn.